Tonight is Wednesday, May 20, 2020 at 5 o'clock is the special meeting, the Enfield Town Council. Again, it's available live on YouTube or tomorrow night on ETV. What we will go, we will go into, we have roll call. We'll go into a quick executive session and then we'll come back out. Just to give the public to understand how this will happen. Roll call, please Suzanne.
Councilwoman Vasco.
Yeah.
Counselor Sicola.
Here.
Counselor Hitler.
Here.
Counselor Keiner.
Here.
Mayor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Mangini.
Here.
Counselor Mueller.
Here.
Counselor Riley.
Here.
Counselor Srazza.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Suzak. Counselor Undire.
Here.
There's 11 members present, none are absent.
Do I have a motion to move an executive session?
Motion.
The Councilwoman Mangini.
Second.
By Counselor Riley, we are now in an executive session. Okay, looks like ETV is back. Welcome everyone. Thank you for your patience. We are back. It's 5:23. We're on item two of our Wednesday, May 20th special town council meeting. Budget adoption, item A, introduction of the main motion. Resolve that page eight, general fund. Revenue summary and page 12, summary of expenditure by function of the town budget as submitted by the town manager and the estimates for the. And the estimates for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021. Including estimates of receipts and expenditures and recommendations of said town of Enfield for water boost control pages 74, 76 through 81. Social services fund pages 84 to 87, 89 through 108. Department of Library Fund pages 110, 112 through 121. Insurance Fund pages 124, 125 through 129. Information Technology Fund pages 132 and 134 through 140. The Dog Fund, Dog Fund pages 142 and 143. Emergency Medical Services pages 146, 148 through 151 and Capital Improvement Funds pages 154 to 166. Be accepted and approved along the amendment specified, the attached schedule of the Town Council of Town of Enfield. Prepared on May 7, 2020 by the Finance and Town Manager. So moved by Councilman Mueller.
Second.
By Deputy Mayor Suzak. I mean, we've already had our meeting. We will go left to right. Council, Councilman Srazza. Any comments or questions?
No, just some really quick comments. You know, Chris, I want to thank you and all the department heads. For all they did to put this together under trying kinds, to say the least. You know, everybody has an opinion and they're entitled to it. But I don't think everyone's entitled to their own particular set of facts. So let me just say this once and I won't have to repeat it anymore. Right now, the state of Connecticut is looking at a $9 billion deficit at June 30. When July 1st hits, there's another $2 billion on top of that. So we're looking at a $3 billion shortfall for the state. Because of this virus, our sales tax revenue to the state of Connecticut is down 14%. Income tax collection is down 10% effective July 1st. The Special Transportation Fund, because nobody's been driving and the pricing drop in gas prices. Is projected to be out of money in a year. On top of that, the state is still dealing with $100 billion pension fund that they can't fund. Since the middle of March, so just about two months. 515,000 Connecticut residents are unemployed now because of this virus. And I don't believe the economy comes back the day we open up or phase two. It opens up when people feel comfortable and I don't know when that's going to be. On top of that, there's 36 billion people unemployed throughout the country. And just a little fact everyone probably doesn't want to hear, but if you look at state and local tax burden. Connecticut is number two in the country behind New York at 12.6%. I think in light of this, I've always been concerned that the state is going to be looking for money. I don't want them to cut us. They have in the past without a pandemic. I don't think we should expect our residents, especially those out of work. Are going to be able to pay their taxes on time. So we should anticipate a decrease in tax revenue. I think it's wise at this time, although as much as I believe in infrastructure. And putting money back into the town, this isn't the year to do it. The final chapter, this virus isn't over yet. We don't know when life's going to go back to normal. So in light of all those facts, I can never. Put an extra burden on our residents with increasing taxes this year. So I support the motion as it was presented. And again, it's not that I don't believe there are valid reasons to reinvest in our community. But not, not with this economic uncertainty that's, that's facing us all. So that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mayor.
You just touched on the fact that, you know, we are in difficult times and, you know, with this COVID nineteen. We really don't know where we're going with it. If you're talking about another surge in the fall, which, you know, God forbid that's going to happen. But you know, I uh gonna make a uh an amendment. I want to offer an amendment on the emergency medical services. I understand that Erin did provide us with a letter. Thank you, Erin, by the way, a very well put together letter. Uh indicating that at this time she's not asking for any additions to her staff. However, you know, Erin. Uh can't predict the future. Uh, our town manager cannot predict the future. I can't predict the future. I would like to offer an amendment adding one EMT or EMS uh person. Um, I'd like to offer an amendment for sixty-nine thousand dollar, which really represents half. Of what was in the town manager's budget initially of the one thirty-nine plus. So I'm going to make that amendment.
Second.
Thank you.
Counselor Sicola.
Are you going to deal with that amendment first, Mike?
Uh, so good point. Sorry about that. Yeah, you're right.
Which.
If you want to go since you're next, I didn't want to.
Well, no, I mean, I think honestly, Robert's rules is we problem. You can talk to Suzanne, but I think that we're going to have to deal with that amendment first, right?
Right. Yeah, you're right. Do you want to go for, I mean.
Uh, do you want me to? I I mean, I can. I'm I'm in support of that. Um. Here's the thing is, I think we as a council, and I will just speak for me personally, don't want to put an extra burden on the taxpayers. But when it comes to public safety, public health and the health of our residents. I don't really think that sixty-nine thousand dollars spread between forty-five thousand residents, give or take. Is a reason to vote this down. I I think that EMTs and our EMS services are more important now than ever. And I don't envy their job and I would support this amendment.
Thank you.
But I have, you gonna come back to me afterwards then, Mike?
Yeah, we get to the main motion. I'll start with you. Is that all right? But since you're up, I didn't want to.
Yeah, no, that's fine. It's cool with me.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Kiner.
Yeah, I would also support uh that amendment. You know, I I live at Abbey Wood and it's an older community. Made up of people probably averaging in their late sixties, seventies and eighties. And over the past couple of weeks, I've noticed a number of ambulances arriving at Abbey Wood from East Windsor, from Summers. And I haven't seen anything from Enfield. That tells me that we are kind of hard pressed now uh to service our residents. God help us if this pandemic comes back again in the fall and in the winter and we don't have the resources uh to help our people. Um, I would certainly for sixty-some-odd thousand dollars that it costs us, uh the public safety is well worth that amount of money. And as such, I uh I do support this amendment.
Counselor Bosco.
I do not support the amendment. Uh, you know, the the thing was, this was brought up at the meeting. When we had on the first time and, you know, everyone, it was said, find the cut somewhere else. Nobody could find the cut somewhere else. We have a fire department in this town that has all EMTs working that we should be working together with. And that fire department goes out to every single call that medical is there. So maybe we use what we have for people wiser. Uh, I I I don't know where anyone's going to think money's going to come from. We have uh. The police officers are, most of them are empties. We have the fire department where they're also doing the fire service. They have the empties. And we have our ambulances and no different than we did with Summers. We gave Summers an ambulance. There's no reason we can't give a fire department an ambulance. You know, when we run into these things, it's time to use your head for something more than a hat rack. Use our head, use our services we have already within the town, so it does not cost the taxpayers any more money. And I just say, use what we have and I'm sure that most of the residents in Enfield don't want a tax increase. And the only way you pay for it is with a tax increase. So I will not support it.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Hemmler.
Well, I believe the EMS department head, she says she doesn't need one, so I believe she doesn't need one. And I would not support this amendment. Thank you.
Counselor Angier.
I agree with what Kelly just said. Um, they they didn't say that they needed the extra help at this time. They're getting by. And I'm sure if circumstances change farther on down the road, uh we'll hear about it. So I I'm against it.
Counselor Mueller.
I don't support the amendment. I'm against raising the taxes. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Yes, I'm going to chime in with Joey. I feel the same way he does. We have a lot of um. EMTs throughout the town. I know we had a situation at the DPW and sometimes we find that. We are very well staffed, but we are not very well with what we have for equipment. And I maybe I should ask that we look at the fact that perhaps, you know, when you see an East Windsor or a Summers or. A Windsor ambulance, it's because both of our ambulances are at another site. Perhaps that there may be a time that we may need to add another ambulance and look to the. Support from our other first responders to um man these ambulances. So. I think I'm on the same page as Joey and I'm not going to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, again, I'm I'm just going to comment, you know, we, last year, when again, there was a uh a discussion at the budget that. You know, again, that we were made an amendment on the floor, which isn't supposed to happen. That's why we have these meetings beforehand. And again, last year, Counselor Sprazza made the amendment on a Saturday meeting before the budget, which we all knew about. And yet, when we got to the meetings, folks forgot about it or didn't know about it and acted like, okay, the process was in was terrible because someone was making amendment they shouldn't. Because you're not supposed to make them on the night of the budget. And if that wasn't the case last year, yet I'm not hearing that this year. We're hearing an amendment on the floor, which we've already discussed. And again, we had leadership yesterday and this was not brought up at all by the minority leader. Again, you're supposed to let folks know when we're going to these meetings, you know, what what's kind, we're not amendments are discussed beforehand. Either that's where we voted them down two weeks ago, and yet it wasn't even brought up in leadership yesterday. I'm voting against this. Decide I don't like this, bring it up on the floor. That's why we have this process. Last year, we heard, again, I recommend people go see see the speech that was uh recorded. My Counselor Kiner on the process. Yet this year, here we are making an amendment on the floor without letting other folks know. I'll be voting no. Counselor Sprazza.
I just want to say, uh, Mayor Mike, I'll I won't be supporting this either. But let me just say this. I've had the uh opportunity and the privilege to work in public safety as the police chief in this town for twelve years. And I worked under the direction of our public safety director at that time, which is our town manager, Mr. Robinson. And I can tell you that if he felt or the EMS chief felt it was vital to public safety. Chris would not hesitate to put that in the budget and explain it. I take our EMS chief and our manager at their word. And I agree with the fact that you have to look at Enfield and the majority of our police officers are certified at an EMT level. They are the first responders. And again, I'm not going to go through my my speech about the financial crisis, but. Any amendment at this point would raise taxes and I'm not going to do that. As the year progresses, if money frees up. And if the EMS director feels it's necessary, whatever it takes for public safety, but at this point, um, I don't see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Riley.
Yeah, I mean, I I guess I'm really just confused because I I wasn't sending email about any amendments. We had the discussion the last meeting. Everybody put their ideas on the board and I thought that the process was, we went through them, we voted. It it didn't go through, so I don't know why it's coming up again now. Um, and we got the letter from. The chief of EMS that said they're going to be fine without it. So I'm just, I'm just going to go with no on that one.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment? Any other discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. Suzanne, again, on the amendment, I know we would raise hands, but roll call on the amendment, not the main motion.
Counselor. Counselor. I'm sorry. Counselor Bosco.
Against.
Counselor Sicola.
For.
Counselor Hemmler.
Against.
Counselor Kiner.
For.
Counsel, Mayor Ludwig.
Against.
Counselor Mangini. Counselor Mueller.
Against.
Counselor Riley.
Against.
Counselor Sprazza.
Against.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Against.
Counselor Angier.
Against.
We have three in favor, seven, eight against and no abstentions.
Is there any other discussion on the main motion? Any other discussion on the main motion?
Yeah, you gotta go down the line, Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Sicola, right. Sorry about that.
Thanks. The only question, because you guys are going to love the fact that I'm going to also offer an amendment. So here's, here's the thing. Offering amendments from the floor is something that happens all the time, budgets. Um, people don't necessarily like it. I respect the fact that people don't like it, but it's not confusing. It's not uncommon. I believe the difference between this year and last year is that the amendment that was offered last year was talked about. And then an amendment landed on our dais as though we were going to. All agree that it was there. But anyway, I digress. Um. We do have budget deliberations. We don't always agree. Sometimes we agree on things, sometimes we don't. Things were in originally requested that were taken out to get this quote unquote flat zero. Which is a misnomer anyway, since there's a one point two million dollars that's not in this budget, but we'll pretend that it's a zero increase. Um, I'm going to make an amendment to add in the grants manager and let me explain why we need a grants manager. Not only was it requested, um, this grants manager position, in my belief, is going to pay for itself. There are so many grants out there under all these departments that we can be applying for. But our staff does not have the capability and the time to do so. Um. I. In in the time that we're in right now, especially in social services, which is where this grants manager was originally requested for. People's mental health, their emotional health, their physical health is of utmost importance and it's really um. People are on edge, right? I think Charlotte even talked about it a couple of meetings ago, would be mental health or mental health awareness or suicide awareness month. People who have lost their jobs, people are on unemployment, they're unsure if they're going to be able to go back to their jobs. There's. People are fraught with uncertainty. Um, and there are so many grants that this town can probably apply for that we're not. That I would like to make that amendment and I hope we do all support it because I do truly believe that it'll pay for itself. In the amount of one hundred and one thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars. Yes, I do understand. We talked about this at budget. But I still don't agree with the fact that it was shot down. So that's my amendment.
Second. Mike, you're on mute. Oh, sorry. Counselor Kiner, you're at the floor.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. And with all due respect uh to those people who have uh said that no amendments ought to be. Coming from the floor, I think the whole point of democracy, representative democracy is to allow the minority to speak their their piece. To let that information go out to the public and let the public decide who's right and who's wrong. Uh, I really take exception to the fact that people are denying or or saying that we do not have the right or we shouldn't have the right. To propose amendments from the floor. Uh, that's not what democracy is all about. Be that as it may. Um, I am supporting this amendment and Mr. Mayor, um, you'll be happy to hear that there will be another one more amendment uh after this. And I hope you would call on me after the roll call uh is taken on this amendment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Bosco.
Again, you know, i- it's it's a probably a very good thing to get. Uh, but again, we 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 said we're going to keep it a zero. Really, the time to argue it was previously, uh, you know, and. We just can't afford a tax increase. Anything that we have coming in, if we get a grant manager, won't be seen for probably a year or two. If there's money, extra money somewhere else that we can find or, you know, there may be another way. We may be able to hire a grant manager that collects on a percentage. Uh, there there may be other things to do, you know, we we need to look into. But right now, we need to keep the zero. And for the ones that said, we we are not at zero. I've said it before. We we have increases, just like everybody's household. We probably, if you look at the numbers, are at a minus zero. Tax increase because we have contracts. We have fuel that's more money. We have payroll. We have health insurance. We have life insurance. We have all the other things that go up for the town, just like it does with our house. So, you know, a a a a flat zero. That one point seven probably don't even touch anything. And uh, we are at a zero, if not a negative zero. So I will not support any spending above what we already negotiated at our last meeting.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Hemmler.
Um, just like during deliberations, it sounds, it seems like we're just doing the same thing. I'm not going to support it.
Thank you. Counselor Angier.
Uh, no questions, but I'm I'm not going to support this.
Counselor Mueller.
I don't support this. Uh, we still want a zero tax increase.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
As just like in deliberations, I think what we need to do with the grant is we need to look at a consultant. Rather than take on more employees and more expenses. Uh, we actually had a person come before facilities that is a grant. Writer who would get grants for building assessments and how you would move forward with your buildings. Should you decide you, you know, you want to sell them. You know, I think that, you know, we always look to increase our staff and sometimes there's other ways to do it. And I think a consultant would have been a much um more palatable suggestion in this economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I'll go back to last year when this was done. This wasn't a demo uh uh wasn't talked about democracy. It was said that we weren't following the process. And the amendment, and the amendment was made on the Saturday before the meeting. It was just clarified for the meeting. And again, the the speech that night was much different than what we hear tonight. Again, I again, yeah, you can offer an amendment and I I'm not saying you shouldn't. But again, it's interesting, the difference uh speech from a year from a year ago. Again, I'll be against this. Counselor Sprazza.
Uh, I'm all set, Mayor. I don't have any other questions.
Counselor Riley.
So I'm not, um, I'm not sure. I don't think anybody said that we weren't letting anybody not put forth things. I just didn't think that it was part of the normal process. But with a grant writer, I think it's a fabulous idea. But I think that, you know, like the Board of Ed, their grant writers. They make their salary in the grants that they write. So. I would not be opposed if maybe we wanted to get some like college kids who wanted to get some time under their belt and they wanted to volunteer. They wanted to see if they could write some grants for us and, you know, put it on their resume and, you know, maybe then we could hire them down the road if they, you know, can prove that. That's something that they can do. I'd be okay with that, but a hundred and one thousand dollars is a lot of money for a grant writer. So I don't, I I can't support that, but I'd definitely be down with, you know, somebody wanting to volunteer to see what they could do. And then think about hiring them at that point in time.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Mangini.
Thank you. Yes, I definitely will support this amendment. A grant writer definitely will uh pay his or her own um salary in the long run.
in the long run, Gina is absolutely correct, um, and 101,000 dollars, by the way, is not a lot of money at all for a grant writer, they are, um, up to 120, I believe, when I, um, did some research. But I al- I also do wanna just touch on, on one other piece here, you know, years ago, because I've been around the block a few years on this council, we did do amendments off the floor, and, uh, you know, uh, there, there are some issues that are very passionate and that are very important to bring forward to the floor on the night of voting on the budget. So, I, I, you know, encourage any other councilperson that may have, um, a passionate or a desirable or reasonable amendment to do so, because it is important that we bring it forward to let the public know that we are thinking and that we are working, you know, hard toward making, um, our town budget, um, solid and, um, you know, workable, thank you.
Anyone else on the amendment? Anyone else on the amendment?
Mr. Mayor, just as a reminder, there will be one more amendment after this.
All right, we're talking about this one right now, any more of this one? Hearing unroll call, please Suzanne.
Counselor Bosco.
Against.
Counselor Sakawa.
For.
Counselor Hemler.
Against.
Counselor Kiner.
For.
Mayor Ludwig.
Against.
Counselor Mangini.
For.
Counselor Mueller.
Against.
Counselor Riley.
Against.
Counselors Farazan.
Against.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Against.
Counselor Ungary.
Against.
We have three in favor, eight against, no extensions.
All right, on the main motion, we move over to Counselor Kiner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I'd like to amend the budget to include 320,000 dollars from unallocated expenses for improvements to the scale house at the transfer station. You know, m- many of you, and the majority, have indicated that all these amendments would cost the taxpayers more money, I don't think that's necessarily true. Um, I have been asked, I've been asking for a bottom-line assessment of where the unallocated expenses are, um, we have been unable to get it. Uh, just as an aside, uh, last year, if I recall correctly, the unallocated expenses, and for those people who are listening and, and don't, don't know what the unallocated expenses are, uh, this is money that has been appropriated for certain projects, and according to, I believe, it's our charter, if the money has not been spent within a three-year period, the money reverts back to the general fund. Uh, last year, our June meeting, uh, we were told there were 760,000 dollars in that account. Uh, I'm gonna guess, uh, that there is an appreciable sum of money now, uh, that we can draw from. Uh, now to my main amendment, the consensus among the members of the town-
You have to get a second first, I haven't, did I hear a second?
Second.
Yeah, I'm sorry, gonna hit the button fast enough.
Thank you. Can I proceed, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the consensus among, uh, the members of the town council, uh, that certainly the town manager and joint facilities, uh, committee members, is that the conditions of the scale house at the transfer station needs to be rectified. Uh, I congratulate all of you for taking note of these squalid conditions, uh, that we expect our employees to work under. Uh, I think many of us are aware, but I'm not too sure the public is aware of those conditions. Uh, these men work in facility where there is no running water, except for a five-gallon jug of water to drink from and to wash with. There are no toilet facilities, except for a porta potty. This trailer is old, the roof is, is old and rusty, the trailer's on bricks and shakes in the wind. And furthermore, our employees, uh, have befriended a number of rats, uh, who have been seen running and scurrying around the trailer. I would say that our DPW employees are stoic, and to my knowledge, uh, they have never complained. You know, ladies and gentlemen, if we could spend money to repair roads, I think we certainly can spare money to give our employees both safety and dignity at the job. I believe the time to stop talking about this problem is now, and to act now, and as such, I would move the amendment forward. Thank you for this courtesy, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Bosco.
Okay, first off, any money, like, we have a folder we could use for something else at the end of the year, so, really doesn't need to be brought up here, but going on there, our employees, have you ever been in the, the, that building yet, uh, Bill? It's clean, it's organized, they're no different than anybody in the construction field, all the people that work for DPW, all the people that work, all, do all the roads, they don't have a bathroom where they go, they pull their truck over, they have to drive over to a, a restaurant or whatever, uh, any construction site that's out there, people use porta potties. Now, I agree, we need to do something, but we don't need to have double scales, we don't need to have a lot of the stuff that they're, they're looking for, and we need to give them something clean and safe. Now, I've been talking to a few of yous, and I have an alternative that would be very cost-effective, and we can get it done, and we can do it with the money we have, and we can do it a little at a time and get it taken care of. So, uh, all I can say is, it needs to come out of facilities and into DPW, because it is part of DPW, and we can discuss this coming the first meeting that we have, and we can get them a better place to have. But, let me tell you, Bill, if you got rats running, if you have a building, they're gonna run into building, they, they're gonna run underneath that, that trailer, but if you put a building, they'll get in the building, that's something that you can't have, and you know something, I've been, I've been dealing pretty close with that for many years, and tha- that's the first time I've heard that complaint. And I live across the street from the dump, and I don't have rats at my house, so, you know, let's not try to make things more than they really are. We need to get them taken care of, but right now, we need to keep the budget at zero. People can't afford it, you guys have already added a half a million dollars if we voted yes and all these things. Where's the money gonna come from? I'm sure these people that haven't worked for, for, uh, two months are really wanting to spend any more money, and then with all the uncertainty, that's a half a million dollars you guys put out there. I'm gonna be voting no, I'm gonna do the fiscal responsible thing, and I just say that after this, after this budget's taken care of, let's get it down to DPW, and we can put that building up and get that taken care of for a lot less, and give them a safe place and a clean place to work.
Thank you, Counselor Hemler.
Yeah, I'll be voting against the amendment, I mean, there's already 30,000 in the budget to get the process going, to get the design process going, so it seems logical to me that gets, it gets it rolling. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Ungary.
Um, I'm not gonna support this amendment today, um, like Kelly said, we already have some money set aside that it's gonna get the, um, get it started and get it rolling. Does it need improvements, yes, is it long overdue, yes. So, they're gonna get started on it, but I'm not gonna vote for this now, I wanna keep, uh, the zero tax increase.
Thank you, Counselor Mueller.
I don't support this amendment, I wanna keep the zero tax increase too, and once it goes back to DPW, under DPW, we have some ideas in mind, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Okay, so, we sit on facilities, I know there's money in there to take it to contract documents. Just 'cause we saw pretty pictures doesn't mean we have something we can go out and put out to bid. That will take us probably about six months. I supported this at budget time, in deliberations, I will support it again, but I will tell you that even if, if it doesn't pass, I will still find money once we have contract documents to get this done, because there are always projects, because we never, uh, when we estimate, we always put a little bit of extra in there because we can't get more if the project comes in above that. So, we always try to be conservative in everything we do, and I think at this point, even though, um, there is money, I think we need to move forward with this, I will support it because I supported it at deliberations, but I don't really believe that it's something we need to do, we need to keep the mill rate level, thank you.
Counselor Sprazza.
Uh, I won't be supporting this, uh, Mayor Mike, but I just wanna make a few quick comments. I do agree with Counselor Kiner and his concern for our staff, and I think we all agree that what is going on down there needs to be corrected. And I suppose if we operate under the guise that we're not in the midst of the worst economic condition since the Great Depression, and in the middle of a worldwide pandemic with all the uncertainty, we would do this in a normal year. But, you know, if we just think about it, just a few weeks ago, we voted to extend a tax interest relief to our residents, understanding that July 1st, they might not have the money to pay the taxes, so they have three months to, to pay their taxes at a reduced interest rate. We, we acknowledge that there's a, a hardship for them, but I don't think we'd serve them well to say, by the way, we're not gonna charge you the one and a half percent interest if you're late, but by the way, next year, we have to increase your mill rate because of these expenses right now, so that's the only reason I'm against it. Uh, like I said, as, as time goes on, and we find that this epidemic subsides, the economy recovers, that would be a top priority for me, but, but not, not, not knowing what's going to happen, I couldn't support it, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Riley.
All right, so, I'm on facilities, um, we worked long and hard at putting that together. Um, yeah, but, obviously, some of us want to move forward right away with it, which I completely understand, because it, it needs work, there's no doubt in my mind about that. But, you know, I tried to put forth, um, a compromise in facilities to see if maybe we could get it to work. Not many people were on, well, nobody was on board with that idea. Um, there's money to get it going, and I'm down for keeping it going, because it needs to get done. Um, but to put all of it in right now is... I can't, this is how I'm, this is how I base my decisions, I can't go to somebody's house and knock on their door and say, can you give me some money? I, I can't do that right now, there are plenty of people that are out of work, my husband's on furlough, it's a real thing. And if we just have to take a slight pause, I'm not saying forget about it, a slight pause, and start getting it going, and then when the money becomes available, go for it, I'm all for that. But right now, just putting it on the budget, I, I, I can't do it.
Thank you, Counselor Mangini.
Thank you, I definitely will be supporting this amendment. You know, looking at the, um, projected budgetary costs that we initially received, 565, and it's all broken down very nicely, um, and again, uh, Mr. Kiner, you know, has offered 320. You know, I, it, it just, I guess I don't understand, we put over 100,000 dollars toward two roads as, uh, you know, an urgent matter, but yet, you know, we have employees, town employees that are working in what everyone agrees to be deplorable conditions, and also the fact that, and, you know, Deputy Mayor Suzak pointed out nicely, um, the transfer station that, that needs work, so, I, I guess, where are our priorities? So, I'm gonna leave it at that, thank you.
Counselor Sakawa.
I support it, no additional comments.
Thank you, anything else on the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just if I can make one or two more comments.
Sure.
Thank you, first of all, uh, Mike, thank you for your courtesy, I, I certainly do appreciate that. Um, you know, all of you seem to be supporting the concept, you're just opposed to the amendment. I, I accept that, I understand that. Um, Councilwoman Riley spoke about a compromise, uh, that she supported in, uh, in committee. Uh, this amendment is a compromise, all we're attempting to do with this amendment is to make repairs and give a decent working condition to the employees, we're not doing anything else with the transfer station. Um, and to Councilman Bosco, um, you, you commented that you were in the trailer, and it's clean. Uh, well, I would remind Councilman Bosco, uh, so are jail cells, clean, and they're potty, but, and there's porta potties in them too. Uh, we're not talking about double scales, we're not talking about anything else other than making the trailer livable for those employees who work there. And as far as the tax increase, which the minority, which is the majority party is con- is consistently speaking out against this amendment because of the anticipated cost, I would still remind you that there is money available, how much, um, perhaps, if John is on, I'm not sure if, uh, John Wilcox is on this or not, but under allocated, unallocated expenses, uh, there's going to be money available, and as such, there will be no tax increase. Uh, and that's it, Mr. Mayor, again, thank you for your courtesy, it's appreciated, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Anyone else have any questions or comments on the amendment? Uh, Counselor Sprazza, you have your hand up, go ahead, sir.
No, I was just gonna, uh, ask Counselor Kiner, um, if in fact, there are no allocated extra funds, I don't know if there are or there're not, uh, but if there were none, would the alternative be to just raise our taxes 320,000, or would at that point, we wait until we get more funds? Just a question.
Just an answer, uh, Councilman Sprazza, thank you for asking that. Uh, with a budget of almost 139 million bu- dollars, it kinda boggles the mind that money can't be found if necessary. We found money, uh, to repair, uh, Summer's Road, uh, it needed to be done, and it's gonna be done. If something needs to be done to protect our citizens, to protect our employees, my gut feeling, Counselor Sprazza, is we will find the money, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? All right, Suzanne, on the amendment, uh, roll call, please.
Counselor Bosco.
Against.
Counselor Sakawa.
For.
Counselor Hemler.
Against.
Counselor Kiner.
For.
Mayor Ludwig.
Against.
Counselor Mangini.
For.
Counselor Mueller.
Against.
Counselor Riley.
Uh, against.
Counselors Farazan.
Against.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
For.
Counselor Ungary.
Against.
We have four in favor, seven against, no extensions.
No, no, back to the main motion, um, Counselor Bosco, anything on the main motion?
No, all set.
Counselor Hemler.
All set.
Counselor Ungary.
I'm all set, thank you.
Counselor Mueller, all set, thank you. Deputy Mayor Suzak.
I just wanna remind everybody that, you know, we keep, you know, the mill rate is level, everybody's taxes will be the same, but our operating expenses have gone up, which is why we're looking at a lot of, um, CIP things that we're not moving forward with. Just remember that, because it's gonna be a very difficult year this year, and it's gonna be an even more difficult year next ti- year, so, I will support the budget, but I just wanna remind everybody that just because your taxes did not go up, it does not mean that the operating expenses to run this- it does not mean that the operating expenses to run this town did not go up. Thank you.
Counselor Sprazza.
All set.
Counselor Riley. Counselor Riley. Counselor Mangini.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Counselor Sikala.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Counselor Kiner.
I'm ready to vote, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Uh, Suzanne, roll call. Is it a main motion?
Counselor Bosco.
For.
Counselor Sikala.
Against.
Counselor Hemler.
For.
Counselor Kiner.
Against.
Mayor Ludwig.
For.
Counselor Mangini.
Against.
Counselor Muller.
For.
Counselor Riley.
For.
Counselors Frazza.
For.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
For.
Counselor Ungar.
For.
We have eight in favor, three against, no extensions.
Moving on to item B, adoption resolution, a capital improvement plan resolved at the Town Council of the Town of Enfield hereby finds and determines that each cap- capital project for the twenty-one, two thousand twenty, twenty-one fiscal year indicated as a series or as a specific capital expenditure in the capital improvement annual budget shall constitute a single appropriation of funds for said series of expenditure uh prepared on May seventh, two thousand twenty by the Director of Finance and our Town Manager. So moved. Uh, Counselor Muller.
Back in.
By Deputy Mayor Suzak. Uh, vote going left or right? Counselor Sprazza.
For.
No, I mean, any com- sorry, any comments?
No, I'm all set.
Counselor Riley.
Oh, thank you. I'm all set.
Counselor Mangini.
All set.
Counselor Sikala.
I have no additional comments. Thank you.
Counselor Kiner.
No comments. Thanks.
Counselor Bosco. No comments. Counselor Hemler.
No comments.
Counselor Ungar.
All set.
Counselor Muller. All set. Deputy Mayor Suzak.
All set. Thank you.
Suzanne, roll call, please.
Counselor Bosco.
For.
Counselor Sikala.
For.
Counselor Hemler.
For.
Counselor Kiner.
No.
Mayor Ludwig.
For.
Counselor Mangini.
Against.
Counselor Muller.
For.
Counselor Riley.
For.
Counselors Frazza.
For.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
For.
Counselor Ungar.
For.
We have nine in favor, two against, no extensions.
Adoption re- doc, uh, moving on to item C, adopt, adopt resolution, low SIP grant resolved at the Town Council of the Town of Enfield. Here does hereby appropriate low SIP grant funds in amount of three hundred twenty-three thousand, three sixty-five for the following purpose in accordance with the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one annual operating and capital budget. Town road paving of three hundred twenty-three thousand, three sixty-five, prepared by the, on May seventh, two thousand twenty by the Director of Finance and the Town Manager. So moved. By dep- by Counselor Mangini, second by Counselor Muller. Yep, uh, Counselor Sprazza.
All set.
Counselor Riley.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Counselor Mangini.
Good. Thank you.
Counselor Sikala.
Nothing.
Counselor Kiner.
No questions. Thank you.
Counselor Bosco.
All set.
Counselor Hemler.
All set. Thanks.
Counselor Ungar.
All set. Thank you.
Counselor Muller.
All set. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
All set. Thank you.
Suzanne, uh, hearing no other questions, roll call, please.
Counselor Bosco.
For.
Counselor Sikala.
For.
Counselor Hemler.
For.
Counselor Kiner.
For.
Mayor Ludwig.
For.
Counselor Mangini.
For.
Counselor Muller.
For.
Counselor Riley.
For.
Counselors Frazza.
For.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
For.
Counselor Ungar.
For.
There's eleven in favor and against, no extensions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to D, adoption resolution, the education block grant resolved at the town schools budget adopted by the Town Council in amount of seventy-one million, six hundred ninety-one thousand, eight hundred eighty-six dollars, included the anticipated revenue of twenty-eight million, seven hundred sixty-eight thousand, two hundred fifty-eight dollars from the educational block, also known as the cost sharing grant and special education grant, prepared on May seventh, two thousand twenty by the Director of Finance and our Town Manager. So moved. By Counselor Muller.
Second.
By Counselor Mangini. Counselor Sprazza, any questions?
All set.
Counselor Riley.
No, I'm good. All for education.
Counselor Mangini.
All set. Thank you.
Counselor Sikala.
I'm good. Thank you.
Counselor Kiner.
No questions. Thank you.
Counselor Bosco.
All set.
Counselor Hemler.
No questions.
Counselor Ungar.
No questions. Thank you.
Counselor Muller. All set. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Suzak.
I just want to verify that if additional monies are sent from the state and the federal government that they will go directly to the Board of Eds for any um expenses they've had for the COVID. This doesn't affect, this doesn't affect any additional funding that they get. Should it come, it flows right to them.
Correct. The answer is yes, Chris, but I'll let you answer.
I'm all set. That's true.
Chris, I don't know if you're, Chris or John Wilcox, either or.
Uh, yes, that is the case. Uh, this only relates mainly to the ECS grant um from the uh, from the state. Um, the the board also receives um federal nutrition money and other state and federal grants that go directly to them that they use for their operations.
Thank you, John.
Yes, my question is, is that all the stuff we always do in a vacuum? And should there be extra monies put in um any of those grants that that will flow to them as well? This doesn't lock in what they get from other sources. It just locks in what we give them.
That's correct. And when the state budget is adopted, if it, if it turns out that they increase um the amount of ECS funding, that would have to, we would do an additional appropriation to the Board of Ed as well by a resolution. We've done that in the past.
Right. And I just want to verify that for the public, that that's what would happen. Thank you.
Yep.
Correct. And we did that last year for the record. Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Suzanne.
Counselor Bosco.
For.
Counselor Sikala.
For.
Counselor Hemler.
For.
Counselor Kiner.
For.
Mayor Ludwig.
For.
Counselor Mangini. Counselor Mangini.
For.
Counselor Muller.
For.
Counselor Riley.
For.
Counselors Frazza.
For.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
For.
Counselor Ungar.
For.
There's eleven in favor and against, no extensions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item V, doc resolution setting the tax rate. Resolve that the tax rate of thirty-four point two-three mils will be set for on the real estate and business personal property grant list of October one, two thousand nineteen for the town in Town of Enfield and shall be payable in two semi-annual installments, July one, two thousand twenty and January one, two thousand twenty-one. Be a further resolve that a tax rate of thirty-four point two-three mils will be set on the motor vehicle grant list of October one, two thousand nineteen and shall be paid in full on July one, two thousand twenty. And be a further resolve, however, that the real estate and personal property tax amounting mounting to a hundred dollars or less shall be paid in full on July one, two thousand twenty. Be a further resolve that any motor vehicle or real estate taxes in the amount of five dollars or less shall be waived pursuant to Connecticut General Statute twelve dash one forty-four C, prepared on May seventh, two thousand twenty by the Director of Finance and the Town Manager. So moved. By Counselor Muller.
Back in.
By Counselor Mangini. Counselor Sprazza, any questions?
No, just just a quick column. I'm going to support everything here, Mike, and I'm I'm very sad that we have to take this action in the light of this pandemic. If it was a regular year, um, you know, things were going well. But I suppose in light of the economic impact, we're all suffering, it pales in comparison to the loss of life people are experiencing. So um, I think this is the best thing to do for our residents at this time. So I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Counselor Riley.
I don't have any additional comments other than the first ones I made. Thanks.
Counselor Mangini.
Excuse me, I will not uh, this question primarily for the fact that uh W is better than the don't, which frankly, everyone's talking about bad thing. And I think Deputy Mayor Suzak actually pointed out, going to get worse next year. I don't know what's going to happen next year. I would um prefer that we have uh looked at some of these projects, some of these um, you know, resolutions and amendments now and offset some of that cost for next year. Next year is going to be, from what I can understand, probably some of what we're looking now. So I think to, I'm going to use the word conservative and proactive say we should um taking care of some of these projects now. Thank you.
Counselor Sikala.
Thank you. Um, I am not going to be in support of this. Um, I can't say that I'm excited about raising taxes. That's not what I set out to do as a town council member. But with what we were trying to add, that it sounded like the majority of the council thought that the three items we tried to add were either good ideas or something that we would all, in theory, like to have, but aren't going to do at this time, would have added such a de minimis amount of a tax increase spread throughout all of the taxpayers that I think that it would have been money mouth, ma- very well spent. Um, and I want the residents to really, really understand that the same eight people who voted against a tax deferment for all of the town residents four weeks ago or less are now saying that they care about the residents and not taxing them too much, not passing on any tax burden to them and are worried about them not being able to pay their taxes on time. Now care. They didn't care four weeks ago. They're saying they care now. That's it. Thank you.
Counselor Kiner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I certainly want to congratulate the Town Manager, the department heads uh, for putting together a budget uh without a tax increase. Uh, but I really believe that we could have done better. Uh, amendments were offered to make this budget a better budget and stay within the parameters of a no tax increase. Uh, they were all rejected by the majority party. But there's one item in particular that really bothers me. Uh, there was a line item in last year's budget and budgets prior to this whereby the town paid one point two-five million dollars uh to the water company for fire protection. Uh, that item was removed uh from this year's budget and passed on to the fire district. That one point two-five million that was removed from this budget allows the majority party to claim that there's no tax increase. But ladies and gentlemen, don't be fooled by this. That one point two-five million dollars will now be passed on to the fire departments. And we will be paying that tax one way or another. Bottom line, ladies and gentlemen, there is no free ride here. We are still going to pay that tax. And since the town refuses to pay the water company for this protection, as they have in the past, and since the fire districts believe that this will burden them and they don't want to pay, we had that proverbial Mexican standoff, a hell of a way to put a budget together, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, I'm voting no on this. Thank you.
Counselor Bosco. Well, again, yeah, yeah, again, if 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 people think and they 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 keep bringing up this one point two million dollars for the water, realize that we had more than that and other costs that increased. So if we paid the water and then just kept adding to it, you would have a substantial tax increase. So that 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 doesn't hold water that that argument. But to Gina's point about the tax deferment, um, it was told on us on how how much money, and and I don't remember the exact amount, that if people did not pay their taxes and we deferred them, that we would pretty much run out of money in town. And um, we'd have serious problems because we'd be depleting our fund balance. We need the tax money to come in on time. And it is a low interest rate. And that way, if someone doesn't have the time or the money to pay for it, it gives them a little incentive to pay. If you say you don't have to pay and it's free, everybody will wait the three months to pay. So uh, i- i- it, we would have run out of money and that would have definitely been a uh unfiscally responsible thing to do. And I'm done with that. Hey, Counselor Hemler.
I I echo what um Counselor Bosco says. It's the responsible thing to do. That's it.
Counselor Ungar.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Counselor Muller.
All set. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
I'm all set, but I think we'll be budgeting the whole year. Thank you.
Yeah. And I agree. I I think three years ago, when the state cut us seven, eight million dollars, that council at that time didn't just shift that money onto the local taxpayer. We got together, we worked, we cut our expenses, and we worked to try to find different ways of, again, balancing our budget. The fire districts have the same chance to do as well. They're an independent, we keep hearing how they're independent taxing districts. It'll be up to them how they pass on that cost, if it's their cost. And again, I think it's interesting, you know, when people talk about, you know, uh, the tax deferment, if we're not collecting taxes, we can't pay our employees to provide the services that people need. And yet, we're talking about raising people's taxes. I mean, we have to collect taxes to be able to pay our employees to do their jobs, to provide the services that people need. You know, the police protection, EMS, and all the other things that the town does. And again, you know, we do care about the taxpayers. We also understand they have services that they need that we have to pay people to provide. And so, you know, I'm sorry, I take offense to that. I do care very much about what the taxpayers are. And um, again, I think it's, it's um, people can disagree. But I know everyone on this council cares about what we're going through as as a town. Anything else? Counselor Sprazza.
Yeah, just quickly, Mayor Mike, I'd just like to say, um, if anybody is trying to categorize and put me in a category that I didn't care about the people four weeks ago, just let me clarify that. My first inclination was to do the three-month tax deferment. But I did my homework, and because I don't have a a math or financial background, I called John Wilcox, their finance director. And what he explained it was, if we did a three-month deferral, that we were at risk of not having the cash by August to pay our employees, our police, our 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 town staff. So it was his recommendation and suggestion, along with our Town Manager, that as much as we would like to do the three months, it wasn't feasible for us. That's why we went with option two. So I care about this community four weeks ago, and I care about them today. And for anyone to suggest I don't is just not accurate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I add?
Any other comments?
Mike, I do. It's Counselor Riley.
Yeah, go ahead.
I I just wanted to add, and it was brought up in facilities the other day, but I do want to add um, personally, and and I, I'm pretty sure I can speak for others, but I'm not going to, but I'll speak for myself, is that we have been taking this super seriously. This pandemic is not a joke. It's not something to laugh at. It's not something that's not real. It's very real, and it's affecting everybody in this town. And I joined the council and ran for the council because I care about the town and the people that live here. So to say that we didn't care or we're not taking it seriously is a is a very unfair and untrue statement. I just wanted to get that off my chest. Thanks.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions? Suzanne, roll call, please.
Counselor Bosco.
For.
Counselor Sikala.
Against.
Counselor Hemler.
For.
Counselor Kiner.
No.
Mayor Ludwig.
For.
Counselor Mangini.
Against.
Counselor Muller.
For.
Counselor Riley.
For.
Counselor Srazza.
For.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
For.
Counselor Ungary.
For.
We have eight in favor, three against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Discussion resolution authorizing the town commander enter an agreement with the Big Fisher Entertainment LLC. Resolve that chapter. Resolve that Christopher W. Bronson, the town manager is empowered to execute and deliver an aim on behalf of the town of Enfield, a contract subject to review and approval by the town attorney with the Big Fisher Entertainment LLC, prepared by the town attorney's office on May 15, 2020. So moved by Councilor Muller.
Second.
Like Deputy Mayor Suzak. Chris, uh, I know this is to highlight our K-9 unit. I don't know if you're.
I believe that the Chief Fox is on the line to give a brief explanation. I think it's a, a bright spot in an otherwise turbulent time. And I would just, I've been asked to remind everybody to please put your uh, microphones on mute. Although it's springtime, it's nice to hear the birds and the children playing. Uh, it's distracting some who are listening. So I would just ask when you're not speaking, please uh, put on uh, your microphone on mute. Thank you. Chief.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you as always for the opportunity to join you. Uh, this resolution represents a very worthwhile opportunity to allow us to showcase the extraordinary talents of two of our employees and their K-9 partners at no cost to the town. I believe this is a positive proposal for the officers, the department and the community. And I ask you for and thank you in advance uh, for your support of this resolution.
Thank you, Chief Fox. Chris, anything else?
No, sir.
Uh, Counselor Srazza, any questions?
No, just any opportunity we have, especially at no cost, that highlights and educates our citizens on the hard work and the value that our police K-9 program does is certainly worthwhile. So I think this is an overbrink. I support it. Thank you.
Councilor Riley.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Councilor Mangini.
Great. Thank you so much, hard work, the work of our officers, Chief Fox.
We're honored to do so. Thank you.
Counselor Sicola.
No comments. Thank you.
Counselor Kiner.
You know, it's hard to say no to the chief's eloquence. No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Bosco.
All set.
Counselor Hemler.
Um, look forward to seeing the PSA when it's done. Thank you.
Counselor Ungary.
I just want to say this is a real compliment to the Enfield Police Department. So kudos to the whole department and especially the K-9 unit. It's nice to be asked to be included in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Muller. All set. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Suzak.
All set. Thank you.
Hearing no other questions, uh, roll call Suzanne, please.
Counselor Bosco.
For.
Counselor Sicola.
For.
Counselor Hemler.
For.
Counselor Kiner.
For.
Mayor Ludwig.
For.
Counselor Mangini.
For.
Counselor Muller.
For.
Counselor Riley.
For.
Counselor Srazza.
For.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
For.
Counselor Ungary.
For.
There's eleven in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Moving item four, discussion 800 Enfield Street. Um, uh, Attorney Talberg, uh, do you have, would you like to read the first uh, resolution?
Deputy Mayor Suzak, you were not able to uh, access that. You want me to uh, read into the record?
Uh, yeah, why don't you read it? I thought that's how we would proceed.
Very well, very well. So um, for the record, the first resolution came uh, in late because this was just uh, this afternoon. Uh, it reads as follows. Uh, resolution referring the proposed acquisition of 800 Enfield Street to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Whereas the Enfield Town Council wishes to acquire the property at 800 Enfield Street. And whereas the council must refer the proposed acquisition to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a report in conformance with requirements of Connecticut General Statute Section 8 dash 24. Now therefore be it resolved that the proposed acquisition of the property hereby referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission in conformance with the requirements of Connecticut General Statute Section 8 dash 24, prepared by the town attorney's office, May 20, 2020.
So move.
Second.
Right, Councilor Muller second, about Councilor Mangini. Chris, uh, Chris.
Yeah, I think that we should read the other motion. I would have taken the, in the inverse order. So I would just suggest that we uh, have the town attorney read the other motion so it puts it in context. I can explain them both and then you can proceed for discussion and a vote.
Alright, so Councilor Muller, we, we move your, right, remove my motion, motion, Mangini, remove your second.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so move. So uh, Attorney Talberg, the other resolution.
I'll now read the second resolution. Ray, uh, authorizing the town manager to sign a letter of intent as to the lease and purchase of 800 Enfield Street. Whereas the Enfield Town Council wishes to lease and potentially purchase the property at 800 Enfield Street. Now therefore be it resolved that the town manager is authorized to, on behalf of the town, to sign the letter of intent discussed in executive session. Subject to review and approval of the town attorney, prepared by the town attorney's office, May 20, 2020.
So move. And Councilor Muller?
Get.
But Councilor Mangini. Okay, Chris, uh, at both motions, uh, Chris, uh, Chris.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this parcel, 800 Enfield Street is more commonly known as the Santander Bank. It's one property removed uh, from the town hall to the north. And we had been discussing this in the context of acquiring it uh, for the purposes of uh, implementing our Higgins Park plan. As you recall, uh, several months back, we executed an option with the owner of the Santa Daubert School um, as part of the plan as well to secure that premise to restore and put in basket, you know, in, in interior basketball courts and perhaps a theater. We had talked about the Higgins Park having uh, a walking trail, a dog park, a shelf for theater, some other amenities as well. Part of that vision was that this property, 800 Enfield Street, which is a large parcel, about 1.7 acres, has parking, continuous to town hall behind the property between us. It would be a perfect gateway, if you will, into the property so that we could really access Higgins Park and also expand a pool area there. Perhaps a water park and other um, amenities that the public will have an ample opportunity going forward in public hearings to opine about. But this not only is to lease and the details will be made known in, in, in the lease document when we uh, execute it. But we will lease it and then have the option to purchase it. Uh, we've negotiated that with the owners. I think it is a very favorable plan for the town. And I will just tell you, part of our overall and our overarching is to get rid of other properties, to jettison other properties. Part of the plan about acquiring this and leasing it would be to avoid costly repairs to the La Mania Center uh, that are upcoming and, and to remove and move, relocate youth services and recreation partially to this building and perhaps to another area. And then that uh, piece of property next to Freshwater Pond, together with the Strahan Theater could be marketed and sold and developed uh, as part of the economic plan with the platform, platform for the future train, but for housing residential units there that would put that property back in the tax rolls and probably bring in hundreds of people, much like the Santa Dauberts on a smaller scale did with the renovation of the school building for about 19 housing units. So it is a beautiful plan. We had a, a, a really strong reception from uh, the public on it and also the council. The reason now it becomes important is because sometimes you strike while the iron is hot. We realized that one of the detriments of that property was the fact that internally it had a night depository a box, it had a vault and it had two drive-through um, driveways. Well, lo and behold, today we find ourselves in a situation where we're trying to do business remotely. The tax season is coming upon us, dog license season is, is coming upon us. People need to pay for various permits, whether it be at the uh, for DPW, at the police department, recreation. So lo and behold, we thought, wow, wouldn't it be nice to have two drive-throughs that we could accommodate the public remotely? They could be safe, they could be in their cars. We could uh, relocate very close to town hall, a small satellite staff there uh, to shuttle back and forth and afford this uh, convenience to our citizens. So we are very, very excited to think out of the box. All of our staff has looked at it. Um, we're very hopeful that we'll be able to do it, uh, commencing in early June, to be available for the tax season and for the dog licensing. You know, town hall is reopened today and as you're going to see in, in, in our presentation next on the COVID-19 update. Um, we've been transacting business and we are reopening town hall by appointment only. But a lot of individuals, they don't want to mail in their tax. You know, they're old school. They like to go in and they like to pay it and get a receipt. Same thing with the dog license. It's sort of a custom. And it, it, it's a heritage in our town that really issues more dog licenses than any other town in the state. So this is a perfect coupling of, of an opportunity, uh, melding the short-term convenience to our residents and staff to provide a safe service for people to transact town business from their car and also securing that property to the long-range plan of Higgins Park. So I'm very excited to recommend it. We ask that you ask that, that you act favorably upon it. And we'll be working out the details and, and giving more information in the ensuing uh, days and weeks. There'll be some things to work out. But I think it's going to be an exciting prospect. As we've all known, we, we feel that we've been reactive in many ways to the COVID-19 situation. We have to respond to governors' orders and to presidential edicts. Well, this is kind of a way for us to have some control as a town and to do something proactively that we're in control of for our residents um, that I think is positive and uh, exciting. So with that, we are available for questions.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, Counselor Srazza.
Mr. Bronson, is uh, is my understanding is part of this agreement, should the state of Connecticut at some point in the next two years decide that they need to cut funding to us, which is what I'm always concerned about, that would, my understanding would trigger or give us the opportunity to bail out of this project going forward. Is that correct?
That is correct. The actual details of the, the letter of intent, because we're still negotiating. Um, but yes, we have two escape clauses. Basically, one is if we were not to receive the level funding from the state that we received this year in any of the next two fiscal years, we would be able to renege. And also, there is also 90 days uh, from the uh, end of the lease period. We have the ability to just not uh, exercise the option and not buy the property. So we put those safeguards in place for that reason.
Good. And you know, I, I support the project. Uh, I am excited in the future about the Higgins Park. But I got to tell you, the fact that we could provide for our citizens and our employees a safe way to do business now through that drive-in teller. It's innovative. I don't know of any town that, that's had this opportunity. And I applaud you, Mr. Bronson, for going forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Srazza. We're very excited and all of the staff is. I appreciate that.
Counselor Riley.
I just wanted to thank uh, you and the town attorneys for working so hard and diligently the last couple of days about, um, about this. Um, I think it's a great idea. I'm glad that we have an exit clause, so we have a safe way out if things go south. Um, but I think that it's an awesome way to think outside the box to service our residents um, when there's, you know, all the social distancing and everything. So thank you very much for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Councilor Mangini.
Yes, thank you. Um, again, uh, Chris, thank you to your uh, staff and yourself, obviously, for pulling this off. Um, it is a phenomenal opportunity. And Deputy Mayor Suzak and I had the privilege of visiting the facility prior to COVID-19. But I, I do want to say publicly, you've gone above and beyond, um, you know, trying to make this happen and you've been successful. When I say you, I'm talking about you and your staff as well. And of course, you spearheaded it, but it's going to be very refreshing to see the outcome. Thank you again.
Thank you. And I would just like to note, I appreciate that because the fact we were working on this for several months, it already, you know, we had laid the groundwork with you and Deputy Suzak, you know, Deputy Mayor Suzak going there and our GPW. So we really had a good handle and insight on this. And I just want to publicly thank the dedication and perseverance of our assistant town manager, Kasia Persiello, because you know, when COVID-19 hit, we abandoned it. She didn't give up. She stayed in touch with the uh, broker and she kept on reminding me about it. And then, of course, when all of this came about, we were in a really good position to move forward. So I thank her for her input, her encouragement and her vision on this as well. Thank you.
Counselor Sicola.
Thank you. Um, I am satisfied with the presentation and the discussion that we had in executive session. Um, I think it's a great innovative idea and kudos to the town staff for coming up with it.
Thank you. Counselor Kiner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Right, this, this item was certainly fully discussed and, and explained and I support it. Thank you.
Counselor Bosco.
Okay, Chris, I want to thank you and your staff uh, for the forward thinking. You know, if it wasn't many years ago, the previous administrations thought about keeping the land and, and tying the parcels together, we wouldn't have a town green. So uh, thank you. And I, I think that in the end, all this will work out beautiful.
Counselor Hemler.
Um, great job negotiating. Um, I'm, it's great that you're thinking in different ways. It's going to make a lot of people feel safe. So thank you.
Counselor Ungary.
Um, I'm going to support this. I just think it's a great idea. I love the, the passion on taking a positive approach. Instead of seeing the drive-through as a hindrance, you turned it around and, and seeing how can we use this and make it functional for our town. Uh, it's very creative and I think the location is great and I wish everyone the best with this project.
Thank you. Counselor Muller. Thank you, Chris. I want to thank you and your entire team. It's a great opportunity for the citizens. They can pay taxes or dog licenses, like you said. And I, I look forward to the whole Higgins Park concept as well. Thank you. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Hey, great job. Thank you. And also a reminder that hopefully we'll be able to use the night deposit as well.
Thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor. And you are correct. As I started to uh, talk about that before, the night was one of our challenges with trying to do remote deposited, you know, deposits. We now have that secure facility. There's an advanced security system, camera system. And also again, inside the vault, which kind of was a detriment, we were, as I started to say before, one of the things we were a little apprehensive was to have to pay the cost of removing the drive-throughs and the vault inside. And now it's just so wonderful. We're using the tax office and other, uh, you know, those type of services. We can lock things in the building in a secure vault and not have to worry about fearing them back and forth. So thank you very much for reminding me. That's another asset to the property.
Hey, Chris, you know, just in closing, again, I think it's also understanding our community. A lot of folks really do like to pay in person. And they don't like to pay over, you know, in mail or whatever, whatever bill or fee it may be. And obviously doing this in a safe way, what we're dealing with now and still allowing people to have an opportunity to pay in person without, again, still social distancing, following the governor's executive orders and keeping our staff safe, really is very creative. It also understands too, how, how the people in this town really do like to pay their taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I will say too, we're going to do this as a phased-in approach. We want to get that window and the, the, both of the drive-through, one is the tubular that you're familiar with, the tube in and the, and the window. But I will tell you also, it is amenable to when you come in where the tellers were. There are five stations. We can very easily uh, do with social distancing and Plexiglas. There's uh, already the counters are built to accommodate transacting business where um, you can just put the Plexiglas over the top. And that would be a phase in that we can probably offer a few more services there again. Or if there's a difficulty with the drive-through, you can just jump out. There's ample parking and come in and go straight to, go straight to a teller. So it really affords us some really, really incredible opportunities.
It's a great, great way of building everyone's confidence back as we move forward. I agree. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Hearing no, so Suzanne will be voting on both, both amendments together, Suzanne?
I think we would do it separately.
Alright, so it'll be the, the first amendment, so it'll be the amendment authorizing the manager to enter an agreement.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Bosco.
For.
Counselor Sicola.
For.
Counselor Hemler.
For.
Counselor Kiner.
For.
Mayor Ludwig.
For.
Counselor Mangini.
For.
Counselor Muller.
For.
Counselor Riley.
For.
Counselor Srazza.
For.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
For.
Counselor Ungary.
For.
There's eleven in favor, none against, no abstentions.
And so Suzanne, for the uh, second amend, uh, the second emotion to refer to planning and zoning.
Um, I think you removed your first and second, so do you want to?
So move.
Second.
Okay, sorry, so. By Councilor Muller, second by Councilor Riley. I thought you actually brought it back. Sorry about that, Suzanne.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Roll call, please.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Counselor Kiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Srazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Susak.
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
There's eleven in favor, none against and no extensions.
Moving on to item five, the COVID-19 update. Town Manager Chris Bronson.
Mr. Manager, we are now going to go to a prepared presentation. We did it in this manner, much like my budget presentation, so that we'd be able to easily put it onto the town manager site tomorrow. It also includes PSAs. And we thought it would be a very opportune moment today, May 20th, when we have begun to reopen Town Hall and restore services to give an update about the COVID-19, what the town has done, what our response has been and how we are moving forward. So with that, I'll leave it to our technical wizards.
Chris, can I, can I jump in, Chris? Chris?
Sorry.
This is Representative Arnone.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have, I have a convention tonight. I have to go get, seek my party's endorsement for the 58th district in five minutes. I'm very disappointed that I won't be able to speak tonight. A lot of information I have here. I will review the tape. I'll write down all my answers and I'll submit them back to the council so they can hear all the information I have prepared. And I will also post those on my website and Facebook pages. So I'm sorry. I apologize. You know, this was planned for five o'clock, but I have to leave the group. And Paul, I don't know how you keep that smile the whole meeting. But everyone, please take care and I'm sorry.
No problem.
Thank you, Representative Arnone. And I would just like to share that you and Representative Hall have been in constant communication, sending us updates from the legislature guidance and been there for our residents. We've shared all of that information and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Go ahead, Chris. Again, turning over to.
All right. And without further ado, then I will turn it over to our technical wizards to start the presentation. It's about, I think, 12 to 14 minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Ludwig, councilors, Enfield residents, business owners, friends and family. I would like to first thank the town council for adopting my FY 2021 budget this evening, which results in a level mil rate of 34.23 and no tax increase. We knew it was important not to additionally burden our taxpayers during this very trying time when so many families are facing economic uncertainty. I am thankful that the budget process has now concluded and we can fully concentrate on the recovery efforts related to COVID-19. I would like to take this opportunity to talk about where we've been, where we are now and where we are going. Although all departments in town have been transacting business remotely and electronically, today, May 20th, we have begun the physical reopening of the town. All Town Hall departments will now be available for residents to visit in person by appointment. Access our town website for the numbers of the department you wish to visit. And they will be more than happy to accommodate you with scheduling an appointment. I understand that this has been a deeply frustrating and a very anxious time for all of you, as it has been for us. With the steps we are taking today to reopen, we hope we are beginning to emerge from the effects of the pandemic and start the return to normalcy. It is important to understand that we, as a town, are subject to the laws of the state of Connecticut and most recently, bound to follow the governor's executive orders, which have the force of law. During this process of reopening, we are following the executive orders of the governor and are also seeking to provide a safe environment for our employees and you, the public. We thank you for your continued patience, your cooperation and your understanding during this transition. On March 5th, as information about the coronavirus was coming to light, I convened an internal working group, which consisted of town administration, elected officials, public health officials and other stakeholders in our community. On March 10th, Governor Lamont declared a state of emergency in Connecticut. Two days later, on March 12th, in consultation with our elected official and public officials, I declared a state of emergency for the town of Enfield. I thought it was important to make such a declaration before taking the extraordinary steps of closing down town government and limiting town services. Thereafter, Chris Drezik, the superintendent of schools, closed our public schools and we closed public libraries, the senior center and the recreation department. One day later, on March 13th, President Trump declared a national state of emergency. We then proceeded to close the Enfield Child Development Center, Youth Center, Family Resource Center and the Adult Day Center. On March 16th, to ensure resident and employee safety, Town Hall and Department of Public Works had to close their doors to the public. The Department of Social Services did as much work as possible remotely while allowing appointment only for certain programs. On March 19th, Enfield had its first declared case of COVID-19. During the first week of April, we commenced to close all of our playscapes and ceased collecting fares for the Margit Carpet Bus Service. All actions we took were for our residents and employees' safety. To address the COVID-19 pandemic, and as briefly mentioned on the previous slide, I created an internal working group on March 5th, which consists of those participants listed above. Shortly thereafter, the North Central Department convened its regional working group, which consists of eight surrounding towns. Since early March, both the North Central Working Group and the Enfield Working Group have been meeting every Thursday morning. Both groups endeavor to share information and come up with goals and strategies that are to benefit our residents in providing services during these very uncertain times. These working groups will continue for the foreseeable future. We continue learning from our surrounding communities and are implementing the best policies and practices which are suitable here in Enfield. Reopening town services. As of today, May 20th, we were able to begin slowly and safely reopening town services. We anticipate reopening all town services in coming weeks in consultation with public health officials while adhering to the governor's executive orders. Here, you will see a timeline of some reopening activity that has occurred or will occur in the upcoming two weeks. Our Department of Recreation has been preparing for summer camp for many weeks. They have filed the appropriate paperwork with the state for permission to allow 50 children into our tons of fun summer camp. On May 5th, they received this approval. But we are awaiting further information and guidance from the governor's office to make a determination whether or not it will be possible to actually offer the camp this summer. We will keep you apprised. On May 5th, the Department of Public Works also did a soft opening of the transfer station. The transfer station will accept free of charge yard waste, metal, e-waste, cardboard and textiles. Residents may also dispose of bulky waste, mattresses and freon-based products. To ensure everyone's safety, DPW was only accepting credit and debit cards and checks at this time. All transfer station employees are practicing appropriate social distancing. This reopening has been a success and very much appreciated by our residents. May 14th, thanks to the work of our development services staff and our town attorney and his office, our Planning and Zoning Commission approved guidelines for reopening outdoor dining areas for restaurants consistent with the governor's executive order. Restaurants are able to apply for a temporary certificate for outdoor dining. If you are in need of assistance with this process, please contact our development service office for immediate help. The Enfield Child Development Center, our ECDC, has received approval as of May 15th to allow them to care for up to 74 children. Thanks to the great relationship we have with Superintendent of Schools, Chris Drezik, we have also received his approval to use additional Enfield public classrooms at Stowe this summer, which after licensing, will allow us to care for up to 194 children during the summer months when parents will be struggling with childcare needs. We are anticipating that ECDC will commence to open with the first 30 childcare slots on June 1st. But again, stay tuned for specific news of reopening as things are in a constant state of flux. And that brings us to today, May 20th, when we begin reopening Town Hall by appointment only. More information on the opening and access to other departments will be forthcoming in the days and weeks ahead. Beginning next week, the public libraries will begin taking requests for materials and providing curbside pickup. With this slide, I would like to take the opportunity to introduce the directors of the various departments of the town of Enfield. I won't go through each one by name, but you can see their picture and their designation on the slide. These are the individuals who oversee all of the divisions and staff of Enfield Town Government. They have stepped up and delivered during these most trying and difficult times. I truly appreciate their dedication to our town and its residents. Before COVID-19, we held director meetings twice a month, immediately following council meetings, the first and third Mondays of each month. In addition, we held one-on-one meetings with each director on a rotating weekly basis. But since the onset of the pandemic, we have been meeting as a group three times per week on Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays and more frequently as necessary. We speak and consult with each other on a daily basis as issues arise. Again, I would like to thank all of the directors for their commitment and professionalism and leading by example during these last few months. I would also like to thank all of our employees in each and every department, from police, EMS, the Department of Public Works, those at the Water Pollution Control Center, our custodians and those in B&amp;G, all those who have been coming into Town Hall and all the other departments who have been working remotely to provide the excellent and unparalleled town services that we provide here in Enfield. This next chart is sobering, but it's important to note, on the left, we have listed the confirmed cases in Enfield as of May 19th, 396. Tragically, sadly, 24 deaths have occurred in the town of Enfield. And our thoughts and prayers go out to those families who have lost loved ones. On the right, we have the confirmed cases in Connecticut as of 5/18, a total of 38,115 cases and 3,449 deaths. We have been posting these on our website based upon the information from North Central Health District every Monday, Wednesday and Friday. And I truly and prayerfully look forward to the day when we no longer have to do that. Enfield is open for business and has been open for business. As I've said previously, we were enjoying a very strong economic growth in the town. And I am sure and confident, based on these statistics to follow, that we are going to enjoy that same resurgence of economic activity in the near term. As you can see from this chart, our building department has issued permits from March 12th through May 12th. In the building department, we have issued 179 building permits with construction value of over $66 million. 74 electrical permits with a value of over $28 million in construction value. 37 plumbing permits with value of over $1 million and 85 mechanical permits totaling over $770,000. I would just like to give a special thank you to the building inspectors who have been going out, doing their job under these stressful circumstances to assure that our residents and businesses are able to expand and continue to do business and make a living for themselves and their families. Information technology. Our activity has been amazing from March 12th through May 19th. Because of the foresight of IT and getting us operational systems and technology, our staff and employees have been able to have over 10,555 one-on-one team calls, 8,296 group team calls, 7,423 meetings with over 15,000 participants and 279,410 messages back and forth between employees, town residents in order to assist and deliver services to the town. It is simply stunning and amazing and I thank our IT department. Our town clerk is an exceptional individual and so is her staff. They have been coming in to continue to transact business in the Town Hall during this epidemic. From March 12th through May 12th, there have been over 3,955 land record recordings. We have received over 142 vital records received. We have issued over 117 certified copies of vital records. We have issued 97 burial and cremation permits, 20 marriage licenses, on a happier note. And our dog licenses are beginning. We've issued 11 so far. We'll be very busy during the month of June. And I would just note, incidentally, that we have more registered dogs licensed in Enfield than any other town in the state of Connecticut. So although our buildings were closed entirely or partially, we were always open for business. And again, this chart reflects what I just recounted for you. If you look sort of to the left, it shows a flat line. That's because essentially we transacted business in person and by telephone. As you start to see the peaks and valleys to the right, you can see the numbers below, 232,000 channel messages, 85,000 reply messages, 52,000 post messages. All of this activity shows the activity that was occurring through IT and technology and electronically and remotely to assist residents and to continue to deliver services. The high peaks show the work that was being done during the week. The valleys show the weekend. There's one sort of lull because this also reflects all of the Board of Education and all of what they're doing, their administrators and teachers, to continue to teach our youth and our children of the town during this time. And one valley shows when they had their spring break. As you can see, our staff and the staff of the Board of Education has continued to work for the past two and a half months. Our EMS has received approximately 996 calls since the onset of the pandemic, March 12th of 2020. They were exposed to very serious incidences of the virus, being in the back of ambulances and being in people's homes with those people who were very ill. As a result of that, over 60% of our EMTs became infected with the virus over the last several weeks. I am thankful that most all of them have returned to work and are doing well. And we thank them from the bottom of our hearts for their great commitment during this time of great personal risk and exposure. Happily, it is National EMS Week. So we take this opportunity to congratulate and thank all of our EMS workers in the EMS Department of Enfield and also to all of the police officers and firefighters in town who are also EMS workers who assist us in delivering emergency medical services to the residents of Enfield. It is the finest, it is the most recognized EMS service in the state of Connecticut and I'm immensely proud of it. So during this time of blight and distraction, we never left or took our foot off the accelerator. We have been working very diligently to eradicate blight in the town of Enfield. We've had a very aggressive program over the last year. And it has culminated in the following two groups of slides in a short video. Over the past year, our development services and our blight officers worked very, very hard to come to the point where we would be able to actually demolish three buildings at 28 South River Street. That has been accomplished thanks to the fact that Governor Dean Construction had been an essential service and we took advantage of that exemption. On 32 Church Street, there were also three buildings that had been an eyesore and a blight to that community and the neighborhood. We, as this short video will show, also were able to take advantage of the essential services construction exemption. Those buildings were turned down, much to the satisfaction and happiness of everybody in that neighborhood. So at least on those two properties, I can say, mission accomplished. Not only are we taking down the old, but we are bringing in the new. And that's our plan today for Better Tomorrow program. We've had a very successful community garden on Main Street with over 30 plots. Even before the pandemic, we wanted to expand this program. We decided that the spanning right now would be a good fit as it would give residents something to look forward to during the summer. Thanks to the support and funding of the town council and quick action by our Planning and Zoning Commission, we have now added almost 60 plots at two new locations, the Central Library and Two Chapel Street. You can go online today and sign up for $25 a plot. We provide the organic plants, boxes and all you need to plant today for a better tomorrow. On this slide, you can see what Chapel Street looks like currently. This next slide shows the community garden vision that has been improved. You can see that there will be 36 planter boxes, four-foot fence, eight-foot gate and a tool shed, plus a water supply. This shows the current location at the public library and the vision of 10 new This shows the current location at the Public Library, and the vision of 10 new planter boxes, a tool shed, water supply, four-foot fence, and the gate directly adjacent to the library location. Just like to note that we would like to expand this program all over town. If you have an idea or a desire in your neighborhood, near an apartment or a condo, we would be more than anxious to hear from you and add it to our list for next year. We're also looking at Lafayette Park as a prime location in downtown Thompsonville. We would like to expand this and eventually have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of plots in town for our residents to farm. That brings us to a very exciting regional farmer's market update. The Governor's deemed that the farmers' markets are an essential service, and we're glad he did so. So we have completely revamped, retooled, expanded, and enhanced the infra-regional farm market here in town. We're hopeful and fully expect to have a grand opening on Sunday, July 26th, from 10:00 to 1:00. This is a change from the past current Wednesday afternoons. We believe it will be much more convenient and attractive to our residents. Again, we anticipate that the kickoff will be in late July, and we will be enjoying fresh produce and other products in our town green all the way through the end of September. Please come and join us. In conclusion, I would like to thank you for your continued patience and understanding as we move forward. Following my remarks, we will showcase a new PSA from our talented staff on the reopening of Town Government. Some departments will be opening today, and other departments will follow. We will adhere to the Governor's orders and consult with public health officials in making any decisions that will impact the health and safety of our staff and our residents. There have been many questions and interest in our summer camps, town pool, recreation, and sports programs. We are planning to open all of these services, but we must do it in a safe and legal manner. I want to thank the people of Enfield for their hard work, diligence, sacrifice. You made the difference. Your actions over the past two months are why we are in the position to open successfully today. Without you, we wouldn't be here where we are, and we, again, sincerely thank you for your efforts and your involvement in this process. Our staff and I remain available to assist you. Please continue to check our website for updates or sign up for alerts through notify me for the latest information. Be safe, be well. I thank you for your attention tonight, and I look forward to a time in the near future where we will all be able to gather again together here in the Town Council chambers at Town Hall.
During the COVID-19 pandemic, our town leadership has worked daily with various stakeholders and the North Central District Health Department to ensure we are taking the proper precautions to keep our residents safe while providing essential services. Reopening our town will be done with the same level of care. Please listen to our talented employees discuss their plans for reopening key services: the library, Stowe Early Learning Center, and the Town Hall. Enfield is open for business.
Hi, I'm Jason Neely, Director of Libraries. The last two months have been challenging for our community. Since March, we've been focusing on building up our digital offerings and moving programs online. Our book clubs seamlessly transitioned to Zoom meetings, and even our new instrument lending program kept going as our ukulele club continued to jam online. With the Governor allowing us to open things up a little bit, we'll begin expanding our services on May 20th. We're going to begin loaning books, DVDs, and most other physical materials again. Items will be available for curbside pickup by appointment. When we closed suddenly back in March, many patrons were left without being able to pick up their materials. The first thing we're going to do is call those folks. We are also going to get the online holds taken care of. On the Tuesday after Memorial Day, we will begin to start to take new requests for items. Starting on May 26th, call the Central Library or the Pearl Street Ranch, and we will set up a time for you to pick up your requests. You can also email us at libraryquestions@enfield.org or place a hold in our catalog like you normally would. Everything will be checked out to you beforehand. There will be tables set up near the book drop, where your materials will be in a brown bag with your name on it. We will also be offering evening and weekend hours. We do ask that you don't come early so that we can maximize social distancing. We've received a lot of questions about returning materials. No fines are accumulating on your items. You can bring them back to the book drops when you have the opportunity. Don't worry about getting them back right away. If you're returning any oversized items, like a musical instrument, just give us a call beforehand, and we'll set up a time for you to drop it off. When your items are returned, we will quarantine them for seven days. While social distancing is being encouraged, we will continue to offer virtual programming through Facebook and Zoom. We will be adjusting our services in coordination with the North Central District Health Department to ensure the safety of our residents and our staff. We miss seeing all of you in person, and we will do everything we can to provide you the best services in these changing times.
Hello, I'm Karen Edelson, and I'm the Program Manager at the Enfield Child Development Center. When ECDC closed for childcare due to the COVID-19 pandemic, our staff remained on-site cleaning and organizing their rooms, conducting professional development, and preparing to welcome the kids back, not knowing how long the center would be closed. It soon became evident that we were going to be closed for quite some time, and nine weeks later, we have come so far. Our staff have taught remotely in ways that they didn't think was possible. Zoom meetings with kids of all ages, starting with infants and parents all the way up through school age. Teachers have engaged with families by dropping off materials to families' homes, including child-sized masks. ECDC staff have distributed packets of materials at the center, mailed weekly letters and projects to the homes of our students, and hosted diaper pickups. Staff have also individually called parents to check in during these difficult times. The response from our families has been overwhelming with words and signs of appreciation. Now, as the state begins to open, we are working closely with the North Central District Health Department and planning to reopen our center in various stages throughout the month of June. We will be implementing the safety protocols issued by the Office of Early Childhood, which includes staff wearing masks, temperature-taking upon entrance to the center, and social distancing. Class sizes cannot exceed 10 children, and the same groups of staff will work with the same groups of children throughout the day. Since we will not be able to accommodate all children in the beginning phase, remote learning will also continue. Enrollment will increase as approvals from the state are granted. We know that things will be a little different when we open, but as one three-year-old recently said during a classroom Zoom meeting, "I miss my teachers, I miss my friends, I miss my classroom, I want to come back to school." We all feel the same way and are looking forward to being open.
Hello, I'm Suzanne Olinicki, and I've been the Town Clerk here for over 30 years. Since the onset of COVID-19, we at the Town Hall have been transacting business as usual with only a very few changes. We have held all our town meetings remotely and have relied heavily upon email, phone communication, and our Dropbox. Many of our staff have continued to come into the office while responsibly social distancing to serve the residents of Enfield. When it comes to reopening to the public beginning May 20th, all of us at Town Hall will continue to comply with the Governor's executive orders, including limiting occupancy, adhering to the five-person meeting limit, adding in several physical partitions such as Plexiglas, wearing masks, enhanced cleaning protocols, and available hand sanitizers and wipes at entrances. To ensure the safety of our residents and our employees, we will be operating in an appointment-only model. Please call the department you wish to schedule your visit with in advance. Upon arrival for your appointment, you will find that all entrances at Town Hall will be controlled. You will be met at the doors and escorted to your respective department. As we begin to reopen, we encourage you to continue to do business by email or use of our Dropbox at the Town Hall whenever possible. We will do our best to offer our services quickly and to your satisfaction. Thank you, and we look forward to seeing you soon.
Hello, I'm Kasia Perciello, the Assistant Town Manager. The COVID-19 pandemic has changed how we do business. In order to provide exceptional service to our residents while also adhering to new social distancing guidelines, Enfield had to think outside of the box. As a result, I would like to welcome you to the Enfield Express. Beginning this summer, we will offer our residents safe, contactless drive-through services in a convenient location, right next to our Town Hall. Instead of coming in person to the Town Hall, you will be able to stay in your car and come through our drive-through to get your dog license, pay your taxes, and more. We'll miss seeing all our residents in person, but we hope that this addition to our service offering will provide a convenient way for you to stay connected with town services.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, well done, sir. All right, so we're going to move on to item six, special guest. I apologize if they've been patient. Unfortunately, Representative Arnony had to leave early, because this dragged down later than we expected. Ladies first, it'll be State Rep. Carol Hall. For the public, we submitted questions. Each counselor had a chance to submit questions, so they could be prepared for them and answer it. Really, how this is going to work? Really, there's no back and forth. We wanted to give each state rep and senator a chance to answer those questions, and have 10 minutes each, so I'll have the timer. And if you have to ask a direct question of a counselor, they certainly can respond. But really, we wanted to kind of have, you know, we wanted to give you the questions upfront so you can be prepared and then answer them on TV. So again, you have 10 minutes, and that's the format. So State Representative Carol Hall, you have the floor. Welcome. And I'll start your timer when you're ready.
Hi, everybody. First, I want to compliment you on a flat budget. I think you did yeoman's work this year to make that happen, and it takes a lot of really tough decisions to come up with a flat budget, because we did it for many years, so I know how hard it is. And I really do truly appreciate it from a citizen's perspective, and I know all the town residents are going to be truly appreciative that their taxes will be held flat by this council, so I want to compliment you on that. I just also want to compliment you on the way you've handled this whole COVID. Watching that video, I think it was a great job, and I think it kind of gives a great perspective to those folks out there that wonder what's going on behind all the closed doors, and are people really working? I think it's easy to forget, because I know I have had personal emails from folks going, "When are you guys going back to work?" So right out of the gate, I want to say, just like probably many of you guys, my phone doesn't stop ringing, my emails don't stop coming, my texts don't stop. John and I, we've probably done more constituent work over the last three months than we have in, for me, for years. It's been really crazy busy. As you might know, most of the issues coming with unemployment, which has been unfortunate because the state has not done a great job with that, and we've had a ton of constituent calls, almost, I would say, multiple calls daily, probably three, four just on DOL. So that's not including everything else that we're getting hammered with right now. But so with that being said, I guess what I'd like to do, and I'm sorry Tom had to leave, I really am, because I think it's nice to hear from both caucuses. He may have a perspective on something that John and I don't get information on or aren't, you know, involved directly with, so I'm sorry to have seen him not be able to stay, but certainly understand. So what I'd like to do is, a lot of the questions that everybody submitted, some of them were real similar, so with your permission, Mike, what I'd like to do is just go in the order that they came to us in, that they were emailed to us in. I don't know if it's necessary to read the counselor's name that sent it. It's up to you guys if you want me to read.
No, your call, whatever it was.
Okay. So some of them are very similar, and what I'd like to do is kind of offer John an opportunity to weigh in, because I don't want to take up all the questions and not have him, you know, weigh in on anything that I'm kind of saying. So the first question was, "Will the logistics of schools opening in the fall be placed upon each individual school district?" So currently, we actually, believe it or not, don't have an answer for that. So you're going to get that answer unfortunately quite a bit tonight. As you know, things change daily. I will tell you that the Governor and the leadership are meeting with all the stakeholders that are involved. So we've got superintendent organizations, we've got teacher organizations, we have leadership from the Education Committee. So they're meeting on this, but unfortunately, we don't have any answers for you right now. I wish I had a better answer for you on that, but it is, as you know, a moving target. So once we have something concrete, of course, we'll let you know right away. The next question was, "Will all of the truancy policies be waived for parents that don't feel comfortable sending their children back to school?" Currently, they're looking at all these issues, and that still hasn't been decided either. So a lot of the education questions unfortunately are going to be pushed out because they're working on this. If voting cannot go back to normal, have you considered ideas of drive-through polling where ballots get mailed to the voters and then the drive-through is there to collect the polls and to protect the workers, things like that? So currently, these conversations are being had. The Lamont administration and the Secretary of State are addressing these issues. They have looked at the drive-through portion of polling, but no final decisions have been made. They're actually looking at a bunch of things. We did, while I was watching your meeting, we did get an executive order through by the Governor saying that they are going to be allowing people to apply for absentee ballots for the primary coming up in August. That came through on an email as we were sitting here. So that's definitely going to happen for the primary only so far. Let's see, do you plan on going back? The, I don't know, that's a misspell, children getting additional monies for, okay. So they're asking about additional money coming back to the schools for laptops and iPads. So as you know, the Governor, together with a private coalition, had put a program together for the Alliance districts to get iPads and computers. Right now, I don't think there is a plan to expand that to every district, but if there are needs in the district, if you can get them to us, we would relay it to the Governor's office, and if you know of children in the district that are in need of that, we certainly could approach this private group that is doing the funding along with the state for the Alliance districts. I'm sure we could secure something if that was a need. Do you anticipate the executive order will extend to the teachers placing the pensions onto the municipalities? Or mandating tolls? So the Governor, from what we understand, does not have the executive power to do that by himself. He cannot mandate tolls, and he cannot shift the teacher retirement to the municipalities through executive order. That would have to go through the General Assembly, and I think, as you know, you know where we stand on tolls, and you also know where we stand on passing the teachers' pensions onto the municipalities. We're all knows on that. So when will you demand to go back in session? That's funny, because we actually... The only reason we're not going back is pretty much like the town is functioning right now. We can't function as a general assembly during the COVID problem. So they're talking about a special session right now. They're trying to work out dates and testing. So you probably will see us going back for...
A minute and a half, Karen.
Okay. You'll see us going back in a special session. Okay. You'll see us going back in a special session, probably in June or July. That's what we're hearing right now, and we're very anxious to go back. Let's see, moving on. Will the state be facing, will the state face, with the state-facing projects, $2 to $3 million budgets, when, why is the state not enforcing the hiring freeze on employees?
Can I go on in about two minutes?
Okay. So before the hiring, before COVID, we were on a hiring freeze.
I just have garbage disposal going in two minutes.
John, John's mic's open. So anyway, you got me cracking up here. Yeah, screw me up. But anyway, we were under a hiring freeze prior to COVID. We were only replacing people that actually left. The only hiring that's going on right now, the governor has had to hire for DOL because we were, as you might know. So I've still got pages here, Mike, but let me shut up and let John-
Yes, thank you. Sorry to cut you off.
... and then we can finish up once John's had his 10 minutes.
All set, Mayor? Mayor? Ten minutes, starting now. Okay, thanks, Mayor. First of all, I am a government junkie, and I want to say, as soon as they gave me the green light to come on, I've been watching you guys through the amendments, through discussion of the budget, everything. Democrat, Republican, I am just blown away by all of you. Your dedication is incredible. I agree with Carol personally that I think a no-tax increase budget is the right message to send to the folks here in Enfield. But I know these are very difficult decisions that you have to make, and I understand where Donna's coming from, where, you know, sometimes when you push some things off six months or a year, you have to pay the piper when that comes due. So very, very difficult. Town Manager Christopher Bromson, you did a fabulous job. I mean, that was a long presentation. It was done fabulously. The folks that are in charge of the different town agencies, I'm just blown away. I want to get a request into the library next week. My son and I want to see Conan the Barbarian with Arnold Schwarzenegger. I also want to let folks know on the council, and I'll have Kate McAvoy reach out to you guys tomorrow as well. I spoke to Beth By, the Commissioner of Early Childhood Education. She says there's been a real drop-off on people requesting resources for birth to three, but those resources are available. And she said, "Let people know because that department wants to come out into communities and really help people because they feel it's so critical, especially for the younger children." So I want to get that message out there. I'll post some stuff on my website and things like that, but that's an important message. This format, I'm not going to complain, but I don't have a printer, so I looked at all the questions, and I had to sort of like internalize them, had research done, but here's sort of where I'm coming from, from the best of my recollection because I don't have anything that I can look to and read from. When it comes to education, Carol's exactly correct. This is in motion right now. I hate to say this, but if I was a betting person right now, I'd say prepare to have virtual education at least for the fall. I am hearing that not till 2021 will people feel comfortable sending their children to school, and the other important criteria is, are the children going to feel comfortable being in those settings? I talked to some folks on the Board of Education, and they feel very strongly, and I agree, we can't permanently veer from bricks and mortar, and I would never, ever support that. But the earliest for a vaccine is 10 months. It's probably more likely to be a year, and so that's a consideration going forward. Mayor, you did a great job in reaching out regarding masks, but again, there's still a need out there for first responders and things like that, so there's sort of a, those two things are crossing wires. As far as technology, laptops, things like that, I would think they may use the paradigm that's being used in the community colleges. I was on a conference call regarding a Snuntuck and other community colleges in our neck of the woods. If the laptops come from a foundation, they're given to the students because they tend to vary what kind of brand they are. But if it's coming from the school itself, it's a lend, the students are responsible for them, and then they have to give them back to a Snuntuck or whatever college they got it. So I'm guessing that that's sort of the format that the state would use with public schools if they go in that direction. Again, you have the Dalio Foundation that Carol was talking about for those special school districts, and we may want to tap into that multi-multi-billionaires, large S, if we go in that direction, and also tap into other great corporate citizens that might be able to help us from a foundation perspective as opposed to anything else. As far as going down the road, Carol's exactly right. The governor's powers end September 9. My leader and Senator Summers, who's the ranking member on public health, will not be voting to extend his powers. Many in my caucus, including myself, feel that he's extended his reach in areas that are not directly related to the COVID-19 problem, and we find that, you know, it's great to like sort of be the king, but he doesn't really consult with Democrats or Republicans in the legislature, changing the rules for hair salons and barbers and nail salons two days before they were supposed to get up and running. That really pulls the rug out from a lot of sole proprietors and small business people that invested and had hopes, and they really need those paychecks. One of the questions had to do with proposals going forward to limit his power. I do not mean this as a campaign platform, but one of my first bill proposals, should I get reelected, to this fabulous job, is to change the law so that we have a balance, so that he must consult with legislative leaders. And I'm actually thinking of a way to make sure that he can't just consult and then ignore that maybe that has to be so tight that everybody has to vote, like, you know, a supermajority or something like that, to do these executive orders or to change these laws. And then timeframe, I think, needs to be revisited like every 30 days, not to give him this huge outlier of power. My understanding regarding the budget, he's just going to tap into the rainy day fund or reserve account for this fiscal year that runs out at the end of June. He'll make that determination. I think it's around $900 million, but that money doesn't sort of get checked off until the comptroller does what he has to do, Kevin Lembo, and so that won't, the rainy day fund won't get depleted until about September. My understanding is the following fiscal year, the Office of Policy and Management Secretary, she's looking to whittle away about $400 million from current spending, and there's another $100 million they hope to glean from savings somewhere. I wouldn't put any hopes in some kind of union givebacks. I know the governor has talked about trying to use a friendly approach, but I, over the decades, never seen that to work. They draw a very bright line in the sand, and so I would fight tooth and nail to make sure that this burden doesn't get put on towns that I represent, and the town that I live in is Enfield. And so a lot of your questions were, "Hey, what are we going to do? Is this all going to be dumped on our shoulders in the year to come?" You're going to have enough things your hands on, so I don't think that that would be fair at all. I've always been a champion against raising taxes. There's certainly things that we can do as a state to economize, just like you guys have pointed to when you crafted your town budget and put that together. There's some other things that came up. As far as your questions, I thought the questions were brilliant, but again, I'm just going off of memory because I don't have a printer. I didn't print off the questions. So maybe I would prefer going forward, and I don't mind doing this every couple of weeks if that's what folks want, but I like a colloquy back and forth. I wouldn't mind Carol, Tom, and myself getting questions from town council people. And I know I had talked to the Board of Education folks, and I said it would be really great for us to do, for the three of us to do this with those folks as well, and I'm hoping that we get invited to one of their meetings in the next few weeks also. These next two weeks are super critical. I didn't like the reverse course for barbers, hair salons, and nail salons, but I will say this. If these weeks roll forward and there's no giant spike up as far as illnesses and things like that, then we're going to see Phase Two start moving forward as well. We need all that to happen, and we need it to be done in a secure way. I applaud Town Manager Bromson, Mayor Ludwig, Deputy Mayor Suzak, and all the council members and all the local leaders for really being sensitive regarding this. How am I doing, Mayor? I think we're close. A minute forty-five, John. All right. Thank you, Mayor. So Kate's actually been watching this whole presentation as well. You know, we are here as a resource to the town manager and to the mayor and to every single one of you. If there's an issue, we may not know about it if you're just reaching out to Tom and Carol, so CCR office as well. We are an extremely valuable resource, and we, I also sort of see, like, Carol probably sees what's going on, I'm sure she does, in East Windsor, because that's one of her towns. Well, I have seven towns, and so I'm watching what's going on in some of those other towns as well. And so we can sort of like, you know, use the best ideas from everywhere to try to get through this together. But I am so dang proud to be a citizen of Enfield, and I just again want to thank all of you for working so hard on this. I enjoyed these last two hours. I ate it up, and that was just a great public service announcement and a great video, and you guys are just doing God's work, and thank you so much for all the time you put in. Thank you, Senator Kissel. Appreciate it. Again, Senator, Representative Arnon will be answering emails. He unfortunately couldn't, the meeting went longer than we expected, so he'll be responding to the emails. Thank you to Representative Paul yourself for sticking around and Representative Arnon for hanging in there as well. On that note, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Councilor Mueller.
Second.
By Counselor Mangini. All those in fairness, say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Have a great night, and thank you all.
Take care.
Aye, thank you.